I'd like to call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 49, 2018, mending file of the Council Number 21, 2016, and ordinance entitled, "Defining and Authorizing Tax Exemptions from Real Property Tax in Order to Improve Deteriorating Real Property in Certain Areas in the City of Scranton, Establishing an Exemption Schedule and Procedures for Obtaining Exemptions and Providing for Nonpermissible Exemptions and Limiting Amendment There To: To Expand the Eligible Areas, Increase the Duration of Each Exemption, and to Lift the Cap on Each Exemption." File of the Council Number 50, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 22, 2016, and ordinance entitled, "Defining and Authorizing Tax Exemptions from Real Property Tax in Order to Stimulate Residential, Commercial, and Other Business Activity in Certain Areas in the City of Scranton, Establishing an Exemption Schedule and Procedures for Obtaining Exemptions, Providing for Nonpermissible Exemptions, and Limiting Amendment There To: In Order to Expand the Eligible Areas, Increase the Duration of Each Exemption, and to Lift the Cap on Each Exemption."
This evening, Mr. Don King, city planner, is here to offer testimony with regard to the boundaries for Items 7L and 7M on tonight's agenda. We'll turn it over to you, Mr. King, and then we'll, we have a couple of people sign in as well to comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like you said, the purpose, my purpose for being here is, the Act requires that the governing body set forth the boundaries of the deteriorated areas for the, and the purpose of figuring out those boundaries, the Act requires individuals knowledgeable and interested in the improvement of deteriorated areas shall make their recommendations to the council. The mayor asked that I come and make a recommendation to your body. The Act defines the deteriorated area by using the criteria that's set forth in two different, two other different laws, the Urban Renewal Law and the Neighborhood Assistance Act. The Neighborhood Assistance Act has a definition of an impoverished area, the uni, or the Urban Redevelopment Law has a definition of a blighted area. So you could mix and match or use one of either of those as the criteria to set forth. So for purposes of this, I, under the Neighborhood Assistance Act, I looked at the one criteria, which is persistent unemployment or underemployment. The Bureau of Labor Statistics report for the Scranton-Wilkes-Barre area for September of 2018, the latest report they have out, has an unemployment rate for Scranton of 4.9 percent. And we lag behind the state at 4.1 percent and the United States nationally at 3.7 percent. So that, that shows that we have a unemployment problem or an underemployment problem. Within the Urban Redevelopment Law, one of the criteria is economic, economically and socially undesirable land uses. In Scranton, as you all know, we have a large number of vacant or underutilized buildings and vacant lands. As part of the SAPA Comprehensive Plan, the Growth Management Plan within that strongly encourages infill development in the city of Scranton, and the Land Use Plan identifies the city of Scranton as an employment center where jobs are going to be, supposed to be, under the plan, funneled towards the city of Scranton to make use of the infrastructure that we've had, that was, that was built for a city that had 130,000 people at one time, we're down to 77,000, 78,000 at this time. And also, as you're all aware, the city of Scranton is a financially distressed municipality under the Act 47. That, and you know what the criteria, better than I do, of what it took to get to there. For all those reasons, I believe that the, the whole city should be designated as the deteriorated area for purposes of these, both of these ordinances.
We appreciate your recommendation, and just for, for background for the public, the city of Philadelphia has done the exact same thing that, that we are doing by designating the entire city and the project, or this, this program in Philadelphia has been a huge success. So we're hoping for, for similar results here in Scranton. Do any council members have a comment or a question before we open it up to the public?
Don, because there's two different Acts involved, is that why we have to, have to have two separate ordinances? Is that?
Uh, no, the two separate ordinances are, I think that, that was our own doing, ones for residential purposes, the ones for commercial purposes. It's, it's probably a little cleaner doing it in two separate ordinances like that, but it probably could have been done on once.
Okay. Well, yeah, we just followed through what we did two years ago, so.
Yes. Yeah, the, what I, when I said there's two different, the, the law for the LURDA that says what, what defines a deteriorated area, says you could use the criteria out of the Neighborhood Assistance Act or the Urban Renewal Law.
Okay.
So you can mix and match the two of them, but you just had to meet one of those criteria.
Anyone else?
Our first speaker is Ron Elman.
Well, you people know how much I hate to be first. Before I attack council tonight, I'd like to say, I spoke to Tony Santoli, our forester, this afternoon, just friendly, whilst we keep up with each other.
Mr. Elman, I, I don't want to stop you, but this hearing is specific to the LURDA. This is not the general council meeting?
Oh, I've been.
We're only talking specific to the tax, the LURDA program. So if you'd like to comment.
I saw Mr. King's name, but I signed the wrong sheet out.
Yep, no problem, we'll, we'll be back out here in about a half hour for a regular meeting.
You won't censure me or nothing. Find me.
What was that?
Yeah. Now you got one over me instead of me having it.
We're not gonna find it.
Yeah, I see you laughing, you remind me of this. I'm sorry.
We'll see you later.
No, no problem. Is there anyone that would like to address council specifically regarding the LURDA?
Is this restricted to the boundaries? Okay.
What do you mean?
Um.
No.
Okay. I have a, I have a number of issues, uh, soon as I find my brain here. I, well, I know for starters, I would like to get a definition of, well, first, well, I'll, I'll do it the other way. Okay, last Wednesday's paper had a full-page ad for, uh, a property, and in bold letters, all caps, "Tax Incentives May Be Available on This Unit." I thought, that's black or white, it either is or isn't. So I called the, the person who had listed this, and I found out that you guys apparently, and I don't even know under what, uh, what it was, wait, that's for tonight, uh, under this, "Non-providing for obtaining exemptions and providing for nonpermissible exemptions and limiting amendment there too." So this particular property was, uh, was one that was upgraded, uh, back, uh, ten, over 10 years ago. And I, and the developer received a very large amount of money for doing the five, it's in the 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue. And now it appears that we are, have inserted something in the, in these, uh, in the, what you're gonna vote on tonight, such that any developer who hasn't, who has upgraded a property and hasn't sold it as yet, that would qualify for this LURDA, or tax abatement.
That specific property, and Mr. Evans could correct me if I'm wrong, was like, is a condo. So condo, apartment-to-condominium conversions was something that was put into the three-year abatement, and that's what I think they're talking about in that advertisement.
But, now wait a minute, that one, when, when that was discussed at a public hearing back in April, I think April 21st of 2016, it was described to Mr. Spraglia as a total build, it was new construction.
Well, there, there was a couple of different things. Number one, it was new construction, I, that, that's the first premise.
And that was.
Second premise was, it was never sold, so it was never titled, it was never de-transfer, so a certificate of occupancy was never given on that particular unit, so therefore it became eligible under, under the three-year tax abatement. It's new construction. It wasn't, it wasn't an apartment by, before, by the way, it was, it was brand-new construction in the interior of the building.
But that was over 10 years ago, and what, according to that, it said, the, you had, you have to apply for the abatement at the time you take out the building permit.
Or if it's, if it's an apartment-to-condo conversion, or if it's a condominium that was not pre, or a townhouse, or a home that was never sold. So that was part of our, our legislation two years ago. And that might be the only town, or condo that applies, to be pretty honest with you. I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, that was, was it done? Has it been done before? I mean, for that property?
No.
Well, then it's moot, then it should have been one, two years ago when this was passed, correct?
Yeah, that was, that applied two years ago, yeah, that, that.
They applied two years ago.
That particular condominium, it's been on the market for almost eight years.
Well, yeah, I know, I know, they've been, yeah. But I'm trying to set the hard time.
Mm-hmm.
Is it when you take the permit out? Is it 10 years from then? Is it?
My understanding is, and again, maybe Attorney Moore could, should chime in a little bit, my understanding is when a certificate of occupancy is issued, is when the abatement begins.
Well, certainly it's got a certificate of occupancy because it's ready to be sold, right? So it has to.
Well, no, it was never occupied, and I think that, Don, I don't know if you have any input in that, but I don't think you get a CO until the property is actually inhabited.
That, that could be the case.
Yeah.
But I, I'm just, usually for, and I'm not 100% sure about a condominium, but I'm gonna guess that it works kind of like a subdivision. When you, you subdivided a, a piece of property into 10 lots.
Right.
Those individual lots don't start being taxed until they're sold.
Right.
So if you're the developer, you're not taxed on 10 separate lots, you're still taxed as if it was one big lot.
And that's true.
But as each of those lots are conveyed out, the new owner, that's when the taxing starts on those lots. So I would think a condo is probably similar to that.
That, yeah, and that's true, because that, all condominiums are basically, right now, that tax for that condo is being paid by the developer, is part of the common area of the development. Once that is sold, then the assessment starts. There's no assessment on that condominium right now, until it's sold.
Well, but there are light apartments there that are close enough.
Oh, there, yeah, there's, there's 16 units, and there's 15 of them that are already sold, and, and soon as they get sold, the assessor goes down, assesses the property for that, whatever value they come up with, based on square foot calculations that they probably already have when it was subdivided. And then that's when it starts.
Okay, that, oh, we're timed here?
No, I, no, I don't know if you have a time.
If you want another, another minute, I don't know if anyone else is gonna speak on this, but.
Yeah, I have, well, I'll, I'll bring them up during the regular meeting, if you're sticking to the five, yeah, 'cause I do have more.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council specifically regarding the LURDA program? Any comments from council members before we adjourn? I'd like to thank our city planner, Mr. King, for coming in, and we will be voting on final adoption of these resolutions tonight. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its standing, where we are nation under God, indivisible, with one degree of justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A check received from single tax office in the amount of $310,491.81, which represents payment of amusement tax, third quarter, from Live Nation Worldwide Incorporated.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Shared Services Committee Report, dated November 27, 2018.
Are there any comments?
Yes, just one comment on this. I just want to read, uh, the report, not, it's only one page. This came out of the Shared Services Committee that was formed several months ago. The members of the committee were myself, Councilman Donahue, Katie Gil-Martin, and Paige Cognetti from the school board. And I just want to read what the initial report says. "Over the past several months, members of Scranton City Council and the Scranton School Board have met to discuss services that could potentially be shared between the city and the district. The Shared Services Committee comprised of City Councilman Kyle Donahue and Bill Gahan, and school directors Paige Cognetti and Katie Gil-Martin. It established a list of areas of focus and called on administrators from the city and the district to share their input. In addition to the goal of realizing cost savings to benefit Scranton taxpayers, the group endeavors to increase efficiencies, improve productivity, and convey a collaborative spirit between the city and the district. The entities are interdependent, the outlook of one cannot improve if the other is trending in the opposite direction. The following list reflects issues discussed and areas identified as potential opportunities for collaboration. The committee will continue to work with city and district administrators to prioritize these items, define plans, and assess possible savings. Under finance, we discuss delinquent tax collection, payroll tax conversion, real estate tax discount period, the 10-year citywide LURDA for improvements in new construction, which is obviously on our agenda tonight, and I think at the last school board meeting, they actually did discuss this, I, I think it's gonna be on a future agenda at the school board. Property tax exemptions and the HUP test. Under purchasing, gas procurement cards, healthcare, pool supplies, chemicals, et cetera, printer and copier services and maintenance, technology. Under operations, crosswalk safety, pothole repair and recycling. And under fundraising and community development, complete count census committee, electric city shock, soccer field project, and grant writing services." And I do want to thank all of the department heads from the city and the department heads from the school district, who took the time over this past summer to meet with us with this committee. Lot of great ideas were shared, we kind of whittled them down to the list that I just read, this could expand, it could get smaller than that. I won't expand on each one specifically, 'cause I don't want to take up too much time, but, again, and then, we met with Mayor Courtwright and the superintendent, Dr. Kirjan, and it went really well. I think there is a commitment from both the city and the school district, an actual, real commitment, to engage in shared services, and I'm hopeful for the future, and, and that we will actually see cost savings, possibly in 2019, 2020. Thank you.
I would just like to add to that, that, you know, I, I think at some point, the relationship between the city and the school district became extremely strained, and I think this was the first step in the process to start building trust, so we sort of concentrated on the low-hanging fruit, for lack of a better term, at first, in order to start building a better relationship between the two bodies.
If there are no other comments, it's received and filed.
3C, Agenda for the Housing Appeals Review Board Meeting, held November 29, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements to make?
Yes, I have two. I announce this every year, it's a, it's a very, very good benefit, and it is called Friends of Shannon McDonough Splashing with Compassion. They had their inaugural, inaugural Polar Plunge in 2014. Since then, Friends of Shannon McDonough has donated to over 33 young individuals battling cancer right here in northeastern Pennsylvania. They're gonna hold their sixth annual Polar Plunge on Saturday, January 26, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Montage Mountain in Scranton, PA. They're calling on caring businesses and individuals alike to support their community event. You can visit www.facebook.com/friendsofshannondonough, if you're interested in learning more about this event. Also, received an announcement today about a winter coat drive at Trips Park Elementary School, and it reads, "Did you know there are almost 600,000 homeless people in the United States? Did you know 15,000 of them live in Pennsylvania? Did you know homelessness exists in Scranton? Did you know even some of our friends at Isaac Tripp Elementary School are in need? My name is Brennan, I am a third grade student at Isaac Tripp Elementary School. I recently saw many homeless people struggling to stay warm on a cold day. I realize that not just homeless people need our help, but a lot of people in our neighborhoods do too. My goal is to collect 50 winter items to donate to babies, children, teenagers, and adults all over Scranton. Please help me help those in need by donating your gently-used winter coats, hats, gloves, scarves, and blankets. Thank you for sharing the warmth." Donations are gonna be collected for this drive throughout the month of December, all sizes are needed, and you can place any donations inside the box near the main entrance of Tripp Park Elementary School. Thank you.
This evening, this evening's council meeting will be our last meeting for 2018. Historically, when the budget is passed, council recesses for the remainder of the year. Meetings are expected to resume on Monday, January 7. However, if something comes up that requires legislative action, council can spend, schedule a special meeting. One last reminder, the bag leaves will be collected next week, the week of December 10th, instead of newspapers. Please bag your leaves and leave them out on your scheduled recycling day for DPW to pick up. Newspapers will not be picked up this week. I'll be dedicated to leaf pickup only.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker is John Latwinski.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Rogan, before I start, can I bring up some photos and documents, please?
Sure.
Prevent, present them to council? And before I get started on this topic, I did speak with Mr. Gahan, I ran into him recently, so, um, we just had a few words about it. And as we get, get involved with this, it's, this is not a Stephen King novel, it's, it's real life, so, um, the reason I'm here, it's regarding the Keystone Mission located at 8 West Olive Street, which is a few blocks from the high school, located in a residential neighborhood, and also one of the two main routes the children use to get to the high school. I'm a resident of Gordon Avenue, which is the side street of the rescue mission, and, you know, my neighbors and I, we've worked hard for many years, bought our homes, keep them maintained, et cetera. I'm here to represent not only myself and my family, but the dozens of other residents in the immediate neighborhood and their families, which include children and the elderly. I don't believe we needed 30 people here tonight to, to fill this room and talk about the same thing over and over and over again of what I'm saying, so I think one person is enough. I'll be the point man for this mission. And there are many residents have fear of coming here because of possible retribution. We're all at the boiling point, we really can't take anymore with what is happening there. Before I start, it's very important that I'm not generalizing all these people that do hang out there. Not all people that hang out there are bad people. There are many that do need and deserve help, but there are quite a few bad characters that this place attracts, and this facility does not belong in a residential neighborhood or on a main school route two blocks from the high school. What I provided council tonight are police reports. They're 17 pages long, they go back almost two years. There are approximately 136 incident reports, and I also provided just a small sample of some of the pictures of what we have to deal with in a neighborhood adjacent to the Many pictures and videos are inappropriate to be shown here or discussed, so I did not bring them. The pictures I did provide, number one, like I said, this is just a small sample. Number one is, the 4th of July this year, the police arresting people and an ambulance on sight. Last month, November 19th, that's a, a person passed out across the street from the Tony Contaffio's Body Shop, vomited, passed out in his doorway. And then another picture I didn't provide was, two days after Thanksgiving, there were two more characters from the mission hanging out right in front of his doorstep, which I videotaped this, and they were there doing drugs, right there in a residential neighborhood, people walking around, these people didn't care. Number three picture, that's a person arguing with a fire hydrant. Number four, the picture there is drug deals going down. Number five, a car, a guy sleeps infrequently, right there on Gordon Avenue, on the side of the mission, with defaced inspection stickers, for at least the last six months, he continues to drive and park there, nothing happens. Number six, that's, I'm looking out the side window of my house, and there's a guy on all fours vomiting on the street outside my home, a few weeks ago, November 18th. Number seven, that's another picture of a person vomiting behind the mission. Number eight is a picture, just a brief picture of the crime reports, a visual for some of the police calls. So the police report that you have with the approximate 136 incident calls, that is only for the mission itself. It's not counting the endless, countless phone calls that we have made as neighbors in the neighborhood to the police due to some of these characters that hang out at the mission, that move around there and continue with other crimes. Just some of what is on the police calls, the incident report are, person with the firearm, disorderly conduct, arrest warrant service, weapons, suspicious person, person with the firearm, trespassing, fight, burglary, harassment, drugs, theft, assault, mentally, emotionally disturbed person, suicide attempt, DOA, overdose, and on and on. Can I continue, or do I have?
Another 30 seconds, just, just to wrap up your thoughts, and actually, after you wrap up, I have a comment as well, so.
Okay. Basically, I, I'd like everybody here to reverse the situation, pretend that you live in these homes, you bought these homes, you took care of them, every day, it doesn't end. You'll look out the window, there's people puking, there's people looking in your cars to see what they can steal, there's people, there's bus stops there on Gordon Avenue and Olive Street, Olive Street, Mineral Avenue, the parents are afraid to pick up their kids because of the riffraff that's there, and everything that takes place, and I'm, and I know that the state of Pennsylvania has a nuisance property law, and also the city of Scranton has a nuisance property law. With all these incidents, something's gotta be done, I'm asking, who will take charge of this and run with this?
We appreciate you bringing this to us, and I think the first thing that, if my colleagues agree, we should do as a body is to get all this to the police chief, and just because they are branded as a nonprofit or a group that helps others, doesn't mean they should be exempt from other laws that are on the books, such as the nuisance law. And I think we need to take a, a close look at what's going on down there, because I know it's been a problem for some time, not only with the rescue mission, but also near the railroad. railroad tracks down by the river. A number of years ago, I had to work with our police department and the railroad police because there were a number of issues with vagrancy down there as well. So I think our first step is, you know, notifying the police chief. I'm sure he knows very well what's going on, but to see what recourse we have as far as trying to do something to get this shut down. Now, I'm for helping people, but obviously, three police calls, two to three police calls on average a month are being averaged here. It doesn't look like they're doing a very good job if their intent is to help others.
Well, the resources that are being spent to basically go around in circles here, and then what's happening to your neighborhood is a crime in itself. So we definitely will talk to the chief, meet with him.
And it's, you know, it's not only my neighborhood, too. It's the children. You see them walk by there, and then they're getting harassed. It's like, there's syringes, there's vomit. Like, it doesn't have, it shouldn't have to be like...
If you don't mind, if you would leave your phone number, I will gladly meet and give Chief Graziano a call tomorrow, and we'll see if we can meet up something with maybe the three of us together when our schedules line up, hopefully sooner than later. And then we can kind of get a good two-way communication going on what's actually happening. And then, you know, we can bring this more to the forefront and see if there's actually a plan, or what plan could we put in place just to stop this behavior.
Okay, and I appreciate, and just so I'm not stepping on toes, I did mention, I did see Bill Gahin, you know, last week, and I said, "Bill,"
No, that's fine.
Just so you know, I did speak with him.
That's fine. When you need help, you need help. And there's, you know, there's no, we don't have a hierarchy. Whatever's going to get you help is where we want to go.
I just wasn't sure how it worked.
Not a problem.
And I'm sure Mr. Perry will do a great job, and we'll all work with him. But as the public safety chair, he's definitely, definitely the man for the job. But this is, this is a disgrace, what's going on at the rescue mission, and I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Thank you so much.
And as you mentioned, John, it goes all the way from the high school, right up to the trail, right up to the mission, right up to, into Pine Brook.
I talked to parents, they don't even want it, like, the running club, a lot of members, they're afraid to go down there.
Well, I use the trail weekly, and I noticed the uptick in the last year. It's been really disheartening, so we're going to do our best to take care of this.
Thank you so much, everyone. I appreciate it.
And I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but when John had sent me the email and we talked on the phone, I did forward everything, including the video clips that you sent and the pictures, to Chief Graziano. I didn't hear back from him yet, but I think it would be beneficial if we're going to send a letter, maybe to try to facilitate a meeting between Chief Graziano, who I know is always more than willing to meet with neighborhood groups and neighbors. And I would include on that letter the licensing and inspections office as well, just because I think that'd make a lot of sense. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Does council plan on doing something with that illegal $300 garbage fee in the budget?
For next year, it's still in the budget.
You can make an amendment and do something with that. You're not going to do anything?
Again, you know my position on the garbage fee. I'd prefer to see it go to per bag. You know, if somebody wants to make an amendment, that's certainly their right to do so.
I think something should be done to help the taxpayers of this city out, at least get it down to back to $178. We pay our taxes, hard-earned money, to get our garbage picked up. There's no reason why we should have to pay an extra fee. And it's a tax. They say it's a fee. It's a tax. We pay taxes to have our garbage picked up. It's ridiculous. It was instituted under Mayor Connors, and he wanted to do away with it, but his council wouldn't let him. Let's see if this council has the guts to do something. I don't think it does, but I hope you prove me wrong. But I don't think you will. Next thing, I spoke about this a while ago. They paved Dorothy Street, and we still get water on the side of the street where the baseball fields are. It doesn't, it can't reach a storm drain. On the other side, between the basketball court and the tennis courts, it's so bad, you don't even have to get a heavy rainstorm. It goes over the curb onto the sidewalk. The sidewalk is impassable, beside where the basketball courts is. And I meant to bring that up, and I didn't bring that up the one time. You can't walk on the sidewalk on that side of the street when you get a heavy rain. Something's got to be done. I spoke about this last week, about the cars parked up around University. I walked, I drove by there again today, coming up and down Olive Street, Quincy, Clay, and Webster. Those three corners, you can't see. You have to edge out, and you just have to hope you're not hit by somebody coming up the street. They're parked right to the corner. Hope they can patrol that area more and ticket these people and...
I believe we sent something out on that last week, but we'll make sure we get a response as well.
What Joan said last week about the firefighters, police, and DPW, I totally agree with her. I think they should get everything they have coming to them. Not to single out the firefighters, but, well, they are. All three, all three outfits are, they're out there in all kinds of weather, the hottest days in the summer, coldest days in the winter, especially the firefighters. They fight a fire on a 95-degree day with all that heavy equipment on, and on the coldest nights of the winter when the water freezes on contact. People say to me, "Oh, they sit in front of the firehouse when they're not doing anything." Well, you know what? They deserve it. I say to these people, "You go out on a 95-degree day or a zero-degree night and fight a fire and see how you feel." So I have the deepest respect for all these groups. Lastly, Council Morogan, will the newspapers be picked up the following week, or will it be on schedule where the cans and bottles are picked up?
In past years, it's been cans and bottles the following week, so newspapers get pushed back another week.
Going to be a lot of papers.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joan Hodawanitz?
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident and taxpayer. Well, since we are at the end of the year, I think it's appropriate to take a look back and a look forward. But the first thing I want to do is I want to thank the employees of the city, most of whom do a very good job day after day. And I appreciate knowing that if something happens, the police will come and rescue me, or the firemen will come and put the fire out, and DPW picks up my neighbor's garbage because we have a private waste hauler, but that's another story. But, you know, I just think people don't appreciate, you know, how difficult some of those tasks are, and I'm grateful that we have people doing them. I know that there are budget problems, and we have to watch the expenditures of money, and there's probably waste that can be cleaned up. But in general, I think the people do a fine job. So I think it's appropriate to say thank you at least once a year. It won't kill us. So what have we accomplished over the past year? Well, you have a draft budget, which I'm sure you're going to pass tonight. Oh, by the way, Mr. Gahn, you are correct in remembering about the court awards. It is in the non-departmental section. In 2018, it was $350,000, and in 19, it will jump to $725,000. That's why I said last week that it doubled, and I was wondering why they did that. We also had an audit, a little late, like six months late, but we have an audit for what it's worth, and I'm still unhappy that it totally ignored the major lawsuits pending against the city. So what didn't we get accomplished? We still don't have that darn Arcataz study, which is more than one year overdue. And I've heard explanations, and we have to digitize, and we have to map out, and all kinds of answers, but we sure had, we had no problem selling the sewer authority. We ran down that track, you know, at warp speed, and now we're trying to catch up with the Arcataz study. And I'm still concerned that there is no clear picture of stormwater management and fees in the 2019 budget. And you may not agree with me, but I think you should also be concerned about what's going on with the school district, because that has a direct effect on the quality of life of the citizens of the city, and it will impact our credit rating if that district goes belly-up, which I'm suspecting it probably will. By the way, Jim, let Sarah know she did an excellent article on the minority teachers in Lackawanna County. I think that was totally outstanding. And I would like to see more minority teachers hired, and I would like to see an aggressive push for that. This all ties in, I know they're a separate entity, a separate governing body, but it affects the quality of life in Scranton. You all have, most of you have children. You'll have children probably a year from now. You know, we need to worry about that. So here's a suggestion I have. First of all, keep working. Keep doing the jobs you've been trying to do. I thank you for your hard work. But let's have some New Year's resolutions. And at the top, it's not the audit. It's not the budget. It's taking care of our people. People like Mr. Young, who for how many years has been coming here trying to get help for the problem that he has with stormwater runoff. People like Mr. Srebo. I identify with them because in 1963, my parents lost their home. Their home caved. And they spent five years working before they got any relief from the city. So I know what those gentlemen are going through. So I would hope that the administration and U.S. councilmen put at the top of your New Year's resolutions, taking care of the people of the city, even if they don't pay taxes. Kids don't pay taxes. We should still take care of them. We have a lot of people who don't pay taxes. They're retired, maybe they rent. They're still your responsibility. With that, I wish you a wonderful holiday season and a safe and happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Lee Morgan. I'd just like to say that as the budget process has worked its way through council and the mayor, I think it would be important to let every resident in this city know exactly what portion of the budget goes to debt service. And I think it would be a great thing for the residents to finally come to the realization that quite possibly the city's in worse shape now than it was when it went into Act 47. And with the school district so mismanaged, I don't think the school district is going to collapse, because I don't think the state will let that happen. And I just think that the fact that the state didn't take over the school district just begins to point out just how much debt and how mismanaged the school district is, because I don't think the state of Pennsylvania wants to grapple with that mess. They want to leave it to the voters and the residents of the city. Something very dramatic has to happen in this city. Soon, there's going to be an election for council seats. We need to elect a council that is willing to begin to discuss transferring a lot of the city's departments to the county and reorganizing the city of Scranton in a very, very thorough and thoughtful manner to shed a lot of the costs away from the city. Now, the county hasn't been run in a sterling manner by any means, but the mismanagement of the city is just remarkable. And the Scranton Sewer Authority deal, that's nowhere near done. And Judge Gibbons and the Court of Common Pleased holding off on all their decisions on the mismanagement of the city, they must be waiting for something to happen. Maybe they're hoping that the people who've gone into court seeking a reassessment have a solution to this problem that's before the court at this time. But, you know, the truth of the matter is that the residents of the city are very severely overtaxed, and that's not going to change anytime soon. And a gentleman who came here and talked about drug abuse and, I guess, vagrants and a host of other issues, that's what happens to a city that's in a massive state of collapse. And that's not just happening in Scranton. It's happening across this country. And, you know, it's very tragic to see all the people that are dying from drug abuse, but you have to ask one very serious question. Where are the youth programs in this city that I experienced as a child? Where are all the playground programs? Where are they? Why does, I guess you'd have to say, Lower Green Ridge not have a pool? And why has it been decades? And I think it'd be important for the residents to do a very thorough study of all the federal funds that have been funneled through this city, and where they went, and where they were spent. And I think we have a lack of willingness or leadership on the part of this council and this mayor to talk to the residents and explain to them just what's happened to all this money. It's really remarkable, and I think that council should, somebody on this council tonight should tell the residents of this city how much of the actual money from the sale of the sewer authority went into the pension program. How much? And what is the benefit to any of these residents of what was done? And the other thing I think that they should do is they should come forward and explain to the residents, although I haven't seen it, but maybe it's happened, where is all the equipment to take over the stormwater collection system that the city has to buy? Where is that equipment in this budget or previous ones? And where is this plan? And Mr. Amoroso's idea of his rebirth of the city? Not happening. It was a shift, but nothing has been accomplished. And the state, it's just trying to rush the city out of Act 47. But I don't really understand how it's going to help any resident. And as you see the children in the Scranton School District, they aren't being educated there, because all the money that should have went into curriculum has been siphoned off politically, just like it has in this city. And the residents, they've received no windfall. They've just been latched into something called poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Before I start, somebody told me all I do is come down here and shoot off my mouth, and I probably owe taxes. I'd like to say that my house, as I've said, is a reverse mortgage, and I have to pay my taxes. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't, on time and so forth. And before I was so rudely interrupted, you stopped me from making a foot... There was only one sheet out there when I come.
You were early.
Yeah, well, what are you going... I'd like to say that I was speaking to Mr. Santoli, our forester, and this is, this city is so privileged to have a gentleman like this that works voluntarily for over fifteen years. And I've known him most of that time, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years. If there's some people that should be thought about by the city, I think it's Mr. Santoli and Jimmy Cle. I never forgive Mayor Doherty didn't lower that flag for Jimmy Cle when that man spent over half his life in this building. That was a disgrace. Well, that's the past. Now I talk about somebody that's not a friend, that's Mr. Bazoni. I think his budget's a fallacy. He's talking about unsound assumptions and projections, but he completely avoided the facts that everybody knows. Reassessments coming, school taxes are going up. He's avoided all those things. This is a very poor excuse for a budget. Of course, if I had to help him, I sure wouldn't know what to do, because I... Of course, if I had to help him, I sure wouldn't know what to do, because I probably wouldn't have lasted in the banking career as long as he did, which was a few weeks. Now, I'm not, I'm not jumping all over you people, but last week I mentioned a couple things that have declined my neighborhood so much. When I bought our house 25 years ago, my taxes were $741. Now they're about $2,000. Nobody seems to care. That car at 2515, been there four years on the sidewalk, it's still there, got a broken Four years of a junk car on a sidewalk doesn't make sense to anybody. 2416 North Main, big tractor parked every day. There's two codes, there's a city code and a state code against it being there overnight. Right the next corner where Dean and Pond and North Main is, three junk cars been sitting there for months and months and months. And there's a tractor sits there every night, a white one. These are what diminish all our property values. One block from the house on 145 Troop Street is that the man's made a junkyard of his backyard besides running a business from the house. I don't know if any of you know where Wilbur Street is, it's a block over from Hollister and Wells, that area. There's a junk car with flat tires, a motorcycle that doesn't run, and a trailer in the front yard of a house. And there's a man from New York bought the house across from me and quit working on it. He told me last summer, he said, there's just not much sense, it's a duplex. He said, the neighborhood has gone down so bad, he said, I don't think I'll ever finish working on it, so. I know exactly how that gentleman feels about Keystone, but I didn't know all those problems. I give them $15 every year at Thanksgiving and at Christmas, and I got a note from him that they were trying to move last year, a fundraiser or something, you know. I think his problem would take care of itself if he could help raise donations for him.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
I hope our next year is better than this one, and I wish everybody a good holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Marie Schumacher. Last week, I was forced to realize this council is truly audacious enough to add four more non-code compliant weeks of no meetings to the eight already taken. My takeaway from this maneuver is that we need a charter review, as this body does not need to meet weekly or collect a salary of over $12,000. Obviously, you are not aware this council is not in compliance with the Home Rule Charter and General Code, as you have yet to take the actions necessary to adopt a capital budget by the 16th of December. Also, are issues many taxpayers believe are important, such as, number one, an honest discussion of how council and the administration would respond to the loss of any one of the outstanding lawsuits against the city. Would you recommend borrowing or raising taxes, or what would you recommend? Number two, the storm management plan, which more than one of us believed would be in the Arcata study, for which we waited about a year past the date the study report was due. What did we get? Nothing. Why don't you use one of these weeks coming up to put in a public notice in the newspaper and ask anybody who's had a problem with stormwater issue to come into this chamber, and you invite also, and make sure they will attend, all of our elected representatives? They need to hear what these people are going through and what they can do for us in Harrisburg. I mean, I can't believe you never bring them in. Maybe you meet with them privately, but I don't think they have any understanding of what Scranton is putting up with. Number three, hard facts on whether the trash fee revenue is used 100% for trash collection and disposal, or whether a portion of it is being transferred to the operating budget for other issues. Number four, the new and improved condemnation policy, which was promised right after rental registration. Where is it? You know, I could go on for some time, but I do have some questions I would like answered first during probably Fifth Order on seven L and M on tonight's budget, or agenda, excuse me. Those are the lertas. Number one, what I would like to know is, do all three taxing municipalities have to agree before this is put into effect? If not, and even if it does, how does the tax office get this information? And that deals with transparency. I don't think, there's a lot of items to this. When it takes place, I would like to know with certainty, I'd like to see a monthly report of building permit taken out, application applied for, and if it's not done at the same time, they're off. How long these people are going to be on this? Whether or not the, whether or not what the tax abatement deals only with that building permit and not the entire improvement? Which brings into, again, why, how this goes with the county, with the assessor, with the tax office, if, how they find out and when that kicks in and when it kicks out? I mean, I may not be around at the end of some of these 10 years, since apparently you can get one right up to the end of the, when this legislation expires, but there will be somebody, and I'm trying to raise him up to take my place, so he needs, he will need the documents. And what, why are these non-permissible exceptions? What are they? And why are they in there? Why do you have permissible exceptions or permissible items, and then you include So I'll look forward to those answers in Fifth Order. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dodson, resident taxpayer. For a couple times over the last month, I've had to go to the Medical Arts Building for some attention. And the only place you can really get a park, get to park, if it's a busy office, which it was, was the parking authority. Well, you always wind up paying $6 for it, even if you're pulling out at 65 minutes past the pay station. And by the way, the elevator, main elevator, isn't working at all. So you might have to walk down two or three floors with whatever's ailing you. And by the way, if you really want to be terrorized, look at the condition of the beams inside. We spent $2.5 million and very successful at certain, certain people getting rid of the Evans Council by bashing them about stopping payment on the parking garage. But the mayor was also responsible, complicit in that, by not rushing in and doing things the right way. I mean, from the front, it looks like a brand-new building, and from the back, it looks like it's ready to fall down. Once again, this is about for the fifth time, year in and year out, paper recycling gets pushed aside for leaves. Now, I can put cans and bottles, I can put plastic bottles in tall kitchen bags, white ones, and get a magic marker, and I can put please recycle on it, it's always picked up. But year in and year out, either through Thanksgiving or Christmas, New Years, I'm stuck with a huge pile of papers in my house. If I put it out in the yard, it gets wet. If I put it on my porch, it probably gets wet anyway. And then on top of it, I'm not supposed to have things that could easily catch fire on my back porch, which could put me at odds with the quality of life people. And then, in my neighborhood, on top of it, after the last snowstorm, we got put off till Monday, I put the stuff out on the curb, I think it was maybe Saturday or Friday. I don't remember if there was a holiday in there or something. Yeah, yeah, I think it was Veterans Day. And they sat till Monday and probably got wet from the snowstorm. In other words, Friday is our paper recycling day and cans and bottles, and we always get our, our recycling crews taken to clear downtown. That's just wonderful, but can't we please start paying a little overtime and pick up the leaves on the weekend or something? And by the way, in six or eight blocks between my house and the grocery stores, I see one house with leaves out there. So whether those guys enjoy it or not, it's almost like they took a paid vacation day. They're not really doing anything, they're probably back at port at 10 o'clock in the morning if they're working fast. Then on top of it, last year, I seen 12 bags properly packed in, environmentally friendly bags, and they were left behind on, on Hamlock Street. And they probably wound up in the trash. So enough said on that. But please, next year, cans and bottles, I can deal with it, I have a big yard, I have a great evergreen tree I can hide it under, and it's no big deal. But in other words, let's pay a little overtime, maybe somebody there would like a couple extra bucks for Christmas with the DPW. School, lobby the legislature, please. I'll have to continue this next year, I guess. But our per student payment from the state is very low, and it's not acceptable. I guess I'll have to address Tony Camel next year, when he comes in trying to turn the city into a county jail. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
If you could please hold your comments till the end, and I'll be happy to answer them, so I don't have to be interrupted as like last week. The Weinberg Foundation has $100 million to give away a year, okay? Between Northeastern-
Could you state your name for the record, Mr. Walsh?
My name's Jay Walsh.
Thank you. I wasn't sure your first name.
And they have $100 million to spend between Northeastern Pennsylvania, Baltimore, and Hawaii. It's per their endowment, they got a $2 billion endowment, they got to spend $100 million a year. And I think we could put a grow house up at Na'ag, if you guys make whoever's in charge of Na'ag aware of that. Because they got the money to spend, we might as well take advantage of it. Your electricity bill is 75% more here in Pennsylvania than it is in Florida. That's because we have a marketing scheme going on, and I basically exposed it in an 85-page brief. And I think if you make the Department of Justice, the Criminal Division, aware of it on behalf of the council, the city could save a lot of money on electricity. Same goes for water, okay? I spoke to the PUC, and I filed a lawsuit in federal court along those lines. I don't know why you got rid of the transcriptionist, but you really don't need the lawyer if you have a transcriptionist, and you'd save some money there, okay? Additional place. And here's an open question. I've already had Mr. Evans here to, I caught, kind of caught him in a crossfire, out in front of the courthouse, in front of the city hall here. If, now, if you want to respond why we need politicians, I'd be happy to entertain your answers. And I'd just like to give you this.
Sure. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, a couple of comments. The Hill Section parking's come up the last couple of weeks, and we did speak about it a little bit last week. Chief Graziano got back to us. As I said, I've also spoken personally with police officers and civilian enforcement people in that area, so that problem is going to be taken care of. There'll be extra ticketing going on, extra care going on to those dangerous intersections. Also, as far as the budget goes, I want to, I want to thank Pell, the Pennsylvania Economy League, for coming in today. We asked them into our caucus. They, they are overseer of our finances since we went into Act 47, and they were very pleased with our budget. This is the third year in a row that we have no tax increases. And we were on a plan to exit our Act 47 in three years. They made the note of it, I believe they even made a note that we're a year ahead of schedule as far as exiting that. We're exactly where we should be, if not a little ahead. They're looking for, as far as the budget goes, is the city financially stable, and can we write a budget that, at the end of the year, makes sense? And they go back, they, during our caucus today, they had information from '16, '17, and current information from '18, and our 2019 projections. And they were pleased with, with all the numbers they had, as I am. I'm proud of our budget for no tax increases and also getting our bills paid. It's one thing not to increase taxes, it's another thing to put off things that need to be getting done. And I think that you've seen a lot of improvements. We've done a great job in this city with our grants and getting money from state and federal agencies. We've also done a lot with liquid fuel money, getting roads paved. We've done a lot from our gaming money that's coming in, our lighting program that we did last year. So it's, it's a feasible budget, it's a workable budget, and it's one that I'm, I'm proud to vote for today. Also, now this one, this will go over, my brother's a little, he's, he's not quite a public guy, he's kind of private, but I'm going to give him a congratulation to my brother and sister-in-law, they just brought a new baby into this world today. So I want to congratulate him and say thank you. Welcome, welcome aboard, and you know, I can't wait to go, go, go visit them tomorrow, and I love you guys. Also, I just want to do a nice, happy, and safe holiday season to everybody. Have a healthy New Year, and we'll see you, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Don, any motions or comments?
Yes. Although I do believe the city's financial condition has improved considerably in recent years, I still believe we have a lot of work to do to make sure we exit Act 47 in the best possible position. In terms of economic development, I think we need to, we need a more coherent vision, which incorporates the work being done by Scranton tomorrow, the Chamber Scranton Plan, neighborhood and civic organizations, along with city and state offices of economic development, into one long-term economic development strategy. And also in terms of refuse, we did receive a report laying out alternative collection options. From my perspective, those options are non-starters. Realistically, I believe the way we collect garbage isn't the main issue. What we do with garbage once it's collected is. It's not economically or environmentally- It's not economically or environmentally viable for the long-term health of this city or this region to keep dumping waste into a landfill without any viable alternatives. I also believe the situation is made worse by the fact that the owner of the landfill also runs the recycling center. As a city and more broadly as a region, we must begin to explore ways to dramatically increase recycling while also exploring environmentally sound alternatives to the landfill. The era of northeast PA being the dumping ground for the Mid-Atlantic region must come to an end. And also on that note, there were complaints in the last week or so and over the weekend of an odor in the Green Ridge area that possibly originated at the landfill. So I urge anyone that has smelled anything out of the ordinary to call the State Department of Environmental Protection at 800-541-2050 to report any odors. And besides just wishing everybody a safe and healthy holiday season, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. First of all, I do agree with Ms. Schumacher about Hormonville Charter Study Commission. It's about time, so hopefully in 2019 we could have that conversation. Also, I'd like to recognize the passing of George H.W. Bush, a true gentleman who lived an extraordinary life, who taught us about civil discourse and decency in public life. He's a personal hero of mine. 41 will be missed, and our country, our world are a better place because of his service to this nation. Also, last year, I had a good friend and a local developer give me a copy of this book right here. It's called "Walkable City: How Downtown Can Save America One Step at a Time." The author is a gentleman by the name of Jeff Speck. It's a brilliant book on how to make our downtowns and our communities not only more walkable, but more livable. While reading this book, I had dozens of aha moments throughout the book, and moments where I felt, yes, we can do this, and yes, we have to do that. After reading the book, I bought six more copies and passed them out to people in the community that I felt would not only get the concepts in the book, but would also become strong advocates for the type of change described in the book. But I felt we needed to do more, so to continue to move the dialogue forward. So for this last year, I've been working on getting Jeff Speck, the author, here for a lecture. And with the help of Scranton tomorrow, Lackawanna County, the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors, the University of Scranton, and many others, it is happening. Jeff Speck will be at the University of Scranton at Leahy Hall on the second floor in the Kane Forum next Wednesday, December 12th, at 6:00 p.m. Doors are open at 5:30 p.m. The public is invited, and there is no charge for the lecture. The lecture is called "Towards a More Walkable Scranton." So I would ask anyone that is interested in walkability, the downtown, the city of Scranton, urban planning, et cetera, to please try and attend. Again, this book is a must-read for anyone that cares about sound planning principles and the future of our city. So as an early Christmas present to my colleagues, I purchased a copy of the book "Walkable City" for each of them. They'll be in our council office tomorrow for pickup. I also have an extra copy for any citizen that would like to read it, and we'll have the copy at our council office for anyone to sign out and return so other people can read it as well. The book also is available at the Scranton Public Library. So I hope to see everyone on the 12th. Please do your best to attend this very, very important discussion, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, just two updates on issues that I've spoken about here in the last few weeks. The first one is Froud Avenue on East Mountain. There was some serious runoff issues with water. Mr. Gallagher did report that the DPW is going to take a look at it, possibly to try to divert the water. And he thinks it takes direct water possibly from Fig Street, which is a direct shot to Froud Avenue, so they are going to look at that, so I appreciate it. Also, Mr. Flynn, who had reached out to me about Murphy Court in Manuka, the DPW said they're going to look at it in the spring to possibly build a curb up, because the ground is too cold now, and he had some more to the note here, so we'll forward that along to Mr. Flynn. I appreciate the response from the DPW director. Also, I spoke to Mr. Young, Al Young, the other day. Mrs. Reed, if we could just get an update from the Law Department, if possible, on who received the contract to do the work on the Meadow Brook Creek Project? I was under the assumption that it was Krieger Construction, and I don't know if that has changed, so if we can get an update on that, I'd appreciate it. Also, just as Mr. Litwinski, who spoke about the Keystone Rescue Mission, was, he left this file here, just looking through it, and he had sent me an email with actual video clips from some of these incidents. It's amazing to me that this establishment is allowed to operate after all, if you look at the police calls here from 2016 to 2018, as recently as November 22nd, it's 17 pages of police calls and incidents, plus all of the different photos and videos that I've seen of it. So I think it, something really has to be done here. That's why I would encourage a meeting if possible, and maybe council can facilitate this, or Mr. Perry is chairman of the Public Safety, could facilitate a meeting between Mr. Litwinski, the neighbors, Chief Graziano, and the Licensing and Inspections Department, because I think we have to look at how this establishment is allowed to operate with all of those police calls. I'd also, at this time, like to make a motion that Scranton City Council place our updated Ethics Code legislation on its January 7th, 2019 agenda.
Second. On the question?
Yes. I've been talking about this now for quite a few months. I would have liked to get this done before the end of the year, but that wasn't possible. But I have been working extremely hard to update our ethics code, so I would like I make this motion so that I can get a commitment from everyone on council to put this on the agenda for the first meeting in January.
Yeah, on the question, I'll second that. Mr. Gahn worked extremely hard on this ethics bill, and this legislation, I'm in full support of passing it through and getting it on our agenda January 7th. I think it's important that, in the city of Scranton, especially with local politics, that from time to time, we need to update our ethics as times change. And it's just more of a way to keep, just to keep more transparent in days where, you know, not everybody's as trusting as we want to be, so let's get a nice, even playing field, especially when it comes to contributions and, you know, other things in our city as far as pay-to-play or anything else that we have going on. It's just, it's an important thing, and I support it.
Anyone else?
Yeah. On the question, one of the reasons it's important is, number one, our code is dated 1976, and the state went about superseding our code in 1998 by their legislation, so effectively, we've been out without a code since 1998, almost 20 years. So we've all committed to getting this legislation on in January, and I think we're all pretty much committed to getting it passed. We feel it's that important. And if this is the first piece of legislation we pass in 2019, then it's going to start the year off on the right foot.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Quite a few things, actually. A lot was brought up today. I guess I'll follow up pretty much where Councilman Gahn left off regarding the rescue mission. I agree wholeheartedly with comments that were made, and I'm trying to be as sensitive as I can to what their goal is. I am all for giving somebody a hand up but not a handout. It appears, especially from these police reports, that there's drug use going on in the rescue mission in and around the area. It may have started with a noble goal, but there are a number of problems in the neighborhood. It's been outlined to us, the police are there on a regular basis, two, three, four times a month. So something certainly needs to be done. My preference on a first step of action would be to look to see how our nuisance property ordinance applies to nonprofits. It's not something that we typically encounter. Normally, our nuisance ordinance pertains to rental properties, landlords, bar owners. It's not every day when somebody comes with this type of a complaint against a nonprofit, but there certainly are major issues here that have to be addressed. Nobody should have to live like this in our city. And it's also, as was mentioned by the speaker, right by our school. Scranton High School's right down the road. So, you know, I'd be happy to help any way I can. I appreciate Mr. Perry taking the lead. I know he'll do an excellent job on this, and, you know, we'll work with the neighbors to get some relief for them over there. Another item that was brought up at our public hearing and during the meeting was the tenure LURDA, and a litany of questions about procedures regarding the LURDA. This is actually already in place, just on a three-year version. So as far as how it's going to be implemented and structured, that's already been ongoing. This is just taking that three-year plan and turning it into a 10-year plan. So I know there were some questions regarding condominium conversions, and that's something that we put in the legislation to encourage landlords to go from big rental buildings to condos. When you condo a building out, it does increase the value, and it increases the tax base, and you create homeowners, condominium owners are homeowners, just as you or I in a single-family home. So more to come on the LURDA when we get there, but it does, is a very promising piece of legislation. A number of questions were also brought up regarding the budget, and again, I'll comment more on that when it comes up, but just to put it into perspective for those who have not seen a copy of it, the city budget is 135 pages with thousands of line items. So to go through the budget, line by line, there are certain things that people are not going to agree with or may not understand, but it has to be looked at on the whole. If you want to look through every line item, there are going to be, like I said, things that are going to be over budget, things that are under budget, but on the whole, this is a very sound budget for the city of Scranton. And most importantly, and I can't belabor this enough, that it does not raise taxes for the third year in a row. Three years ago, when taxes didn't go up, some people said, well, there's an election coming up in two years. The next year, well, it's an election year. It's not an election year. Not one of us up here is running for office. Nobody in this building is running for office, and the taxes are not going up, and that's because the last series of budgets that were presented and passed by council were sound budgets. And many of the same objections and concerns that are being raised today were raised last year, the year before, the year before. It's one of those things when a document is so large, being 135 pages and thousands of line items, if you want to find something to complain about in it, you could find it. But you have to overlook 90 good things to find the 10 bad. I'll have more to say on the budget when that comes up, but just because that was brought up quite a bit from the podium tonight, wanted to address some of those issues. And finally, I'd just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a healthy, happy, and safe New Year. Thank you.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 38, 2018, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2019 to and including December 31, 2019, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2019.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second, on the question.
Yes, on the question. First of all, I just want to say that no budget is perfect, and I certainly understand that. You'll never find a budget that is 100% perfect or that makes everyone happy. And over the past few weeks, I was not questioning the integrity of the budget process, and I'm certainly not trying to find fault with every little thing in the budget. I do think it's a responsibility of council to go through every single line item, because that is our job. If we look at it just simply as a whole, I don't think we're doing our due diligence. But what I'm trying to do is marry up the proposed budget with the bigger picture of recovery. In my review of the budget, I proposed several questions, a few pages long. And I believe that my questions are a part of a good budget process in which elected officials analyze, scrutinize, and question everything. Again, not just to question things for the sake of finding something wrong, but because it is our duty as elected officials to do this, to analyze things, to scrutinize things. Then and only then do I think you can have an actual democratic process where the administration proposes something, we vet it, we analyze it, we scrutinize it, and then I would feel comfortable certainly voting for it. I take this process extremely seriously. It's my belief, and I've said this before, that council is supposed to be a check and a balance on the strong mayor form of government that we have. I received responses to my questions from the administration that I posed a week and a half ago, and I appreciated that. And most of them were in detail, it was a few pages long. And I know that, you know, the business administrator and others are busy, and they, you know, have great responsibilities in their position, and I don't take it lightly when a council member asks dozens and dozens of questions, and they take the time to respond to that. However, I did take issue with several questions that I did not feel were answered in full or where I felt the responses were not clear. Last Friday, I sent a very clear follow-up to the administration, and today I received a less than professional response from Mr. Bolzoni. In Mr. Bolzoni's memorandum to Mrs. Reed and myself, I won't go through the whole thing, but he, you know, basically questions whether or not I prepared my own questions and my own correspondence to Mr. Bolzoni. He says, "Since one might question whether the councilman prepared the communication dated November 30th, 2018, which presents itself as an ethical dilemma, in combination with 11 pages of previously prepared responses, I find a further venture of some sufficient labor of questionable value." Then he paraphrases General George S. Patton, "I don't cover the same ground twice." You know, I have to say that I found this response to be extremely unprofessional, and I take Mr. Bolzoni as a very professional person. I'm not naive enough to believe that I'm a financial expert, and I know all of the answers. I went to the University of Scranton for secondary education, I have a master's in that, and I also went for history and communications. I don't have a degree in finance, nor do I pretend to, but I do write my own questions. I do seek advice from friends of mine who are professionals in the field. I think anybody who does their due diligence would certainly do that. This is not an insult to me, though. It's an insult to all of the people that I represent and that we all represent, the taxpayers of the city of Scranton. This isn't council's money, it's not the administration's money, it's the taxpayers' money. Instead of ignoring, sidestepping, or insulting the people of the city, the administration should just simply answer the questions that were posed. This is what is wrong with our government here in the city of Scranton, and at some points over the past few years, the lack of transparency. People are generally afraid, I think, to question things, and when they are rebuffed, they give up. I am not giving up. I will continue to question things, even in the face of responses that I feel are unprofessional. The mayor's asking us to approve this budget without being completely transparent. Again, and I won't go through all of it, but I posed very specific questions that I believe needed clarification based on the original correspondence that was sent, and I did not get that. One of those was the net interest cost associated with the pension note that was passed by this council a few weeks ago. I asked, had that borrowing been included in the 2019 budget? Mr. Bolzoni gave a response, I didn't find it sufficient, and I didn't find it clear. I also brought this up to Pell in the caucus earlier tonight. Says that an amount of $576,027 is due in 2019 on June 1st. I don't see that expense item located anywhere in the 2019 budget. A cause of concern? My question was not answered. On the mercantile and business privilege tax, I asked very specific questions about that. I did not get a response. We're saying that we're going to see a $400,000 increase in collections from what was budgeted in 2018. The city gave a response, and I appreciated that. It says that we've identified 600 accounts subject to a failure to file notice via the audit process. And then it's, I'm told to draw my own conclusions relative to collection activity as warranted. I asked that, or I commented, that it appears the city is using this information to budget a significant increase in business tax collections, but 600 accounts failed to respond to audit letters. I don't believe that's enough to warrant a major increase in collections, and we're already lagging behind as far as I can tell this year. So I asked, just for clarification, has a single tax office and/or turnkey provided the city with an estimate of 2019 additional tax collections? Please provide this information. There's also additional questions I had on intergovernmental reimbursements, overtime costs that concern me, new hires, assistant parks and recreation director, project manager in the Law Department, and secretary- in the Law Department, and Secretary in Lips. I didn't, there may just be a disagreement there, but I didn't see the need for those positions. There's also an expenditure in here for the Kaiser Valley Pumping Station. I asked questions about that months and months and months ago, very specific, never received a response. I asked again, didn't receive a sufficient response. So again, this is why I'm asking these questions and for follow-up. If my questions were answered sufficiently, I'd probably be inclined to vote for a budget that does not have a tax increase. Certainly, I think any budget with a tax increase, it's a good thing, and you don't want to raise taxes on the people of the city. I'm simply doing my due diligence. I did not appreciate the response from Mr. Bolzoni and the administration questioning whether or not I came up with my own questions. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we table this budget until these important questions are answered.
Second, on the question.
On the question, just to note, we have until December 15 to pass a final budget. I don't see the rush in passing it tonight, especially in light of some of the issues I've brought up. And let me just make another point. You know, I'm not asking these questions to belabor this budget, I'm not asking these questions, you know, to find something that's wrong in the budget. I'm literally doing my due diligence. This is over a $100 million budget. I don't have the financial expertise to understand everything in it, which is why I asked very specific questions. Didn't accuse anybody of doing anything, didn't say anything was wrong. All I did was state my concerns and ask questions and ask for clarification, which is what I would assume any public official would do with a budget of this magnitude. So I just asked that we table this budget so that we can get clarification to these answers, and again, we have until December 15 to pass a final budget.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, just very quickly, just to, you know, expand a little on what Billy said, I don't think there's any reason whatsoever to not take our due diligence, take our time. We have the time to do it, there's still four weeks left in the year, which we're getting paid for, so I believe we should do our due diligence on this.
Just a quick comment regarding Mr. Bolzoni and responses that we've received back. I do know that there was a very lengthy list sent to Mr. Bolzoni from Mr. Gahn that was replied, and then a reply was sent to him, I believe it was Friday. And he did send a reply back this morning, but I do want to comment that for anyone that's saying there's not enough time, Mr. Bolzoni has been at our disposal anytime, day or night, and I believe, I know I've talked to him on weekends, I'm sure other members on the board have as well. I just think to drop another 50 questions, the business day before we know the final vote is going to be, is a delay tactic and is trying to create a reason to vote against what is a very sound proposal. So I think we should have the final vote. The bottom line is to the taxpayers, your taxes don't go up and your services are getting better. And this is really the third year in a row we've had this debate about a no-tax increase budget. So I'm proud to have voted for the last two and to vote for this one as well. And just a reminder for my colleagues, the vote is on the motion to table. Is there anyone else?
Right. With all due respect, Mr. Rogan, not to belabor this point, I was only given the responses to my initial questions last week, so of course, I need time to review them, and I responded in kind on Friday. I was not under the assumption that this would be council's final meeting on the budget. I would have just assumed that if, you know, council people, myself, because I'm the only one apparently asking any questions up here, that had additional questions, that we would table it, because in my review of past councils, I don't think any council in the last few years has ever ended on December 3. They've gone to December 10, December 15, even past December 15. Again, I'm simply asking for clarification on certain items that I asked about. I think they're important, not trying to belabor the point. I think this budget with no tax increase is a good thing, but I think there are certain items in here that were not answered that I think are important, so that's why I made the motion.
Anyone else?
I would just like to just add, too, that I did sit down with Mr. Bolzoni and also the mayor, and they went through and answered my questions adequately, and I just feel that each and every one of us should have that opportunity.
All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The nos have it, and it remains on the agenda.
All right. On the questions, now we're back to the original legislation. So first of all, I'd like to thank BA Bolzoni for coming in last week for our public caucus. Mr. Bolzoni has always been forthcoming and available to all of us for questions, not only on the budget, but on any matter within his purview. I appreciate Councilman Gahn's due diligence in asking some very important questions. They were very similar to many of the questions I had asked Mr. Bolzoni personally through several conversations I had with him during and after the budget's formation. But it was good to get additional information in writing as support for the budget, and it actually has led me to support the budget even more, actually. At this point, I'm confident and ready to support the budget. I continue to be comfortable with the openness and transparency of BA Bolzoni's budget process, and quite frankly, it's not very much heavy lifting to support a no-tax increase budget. But with that said, it might be much more difficult a task to create contingency plans if we do not receive favorable rulings in any of the current lawsuits underway. I am sure this city council would make themselves available for any discussions related to putting a so-called Plan B together and working with the administration. The stormwater issue has come up, it couldn't be any clearer that the present mode of operation relative to stormwater management is failing. The weather over the last year has crystallized that for all of us, so we are all anxious to see the results of the stormwater study by Arcadis and get moving on this front. There's principally $500,000 set aside from the sewer proceeds for seed money that gets started with whatever direction the study deems appropriate, so I don't see much of an impact on the 2019 budget relative to stormwater funding. So for now, I feel the budget is solid, the assumptions and revenue projections and expenses are solid, so I will be voting yes for a no-tax increase this evening.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
No.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A, the no-tax increase budget legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 39, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 6, 1976, entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended, imposing a tax for general revenue purposes on the transfer of real property situated within the city of Scranton, prescribing and regulating the method of evidencing the payment of such tax, conferring powers and imposing the duties upon certain persons, and providing penalties by imposing the rate of the realty transfer tax at 2 and 2/10% per calendar year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 40, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 7, 1976, entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended, imposing a mercantile license tax of 2 mils for the year 1976 and annually thereafter upon persons engaging in certain occupations and businesses therein, providing for its levying collection and for the issuance of mercantile licenses, conferring and imposing powers and duties upon the tax collector of the city of Scranton, and imposing penalties by imposing the mercantile license tax at 1 mil for calendar year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 41, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 8, 1976, entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended, providing for the general revenue by imposing a tax at the rate of 2 mils upon the privilege of operating or conducting business in the city of Scranton as measured by the gross receipts therfrom, requiring registration and payment of the tax as condition to the conducting of such business, providing for the levying collection of such tax, prescribing such requirements for returns and records, conferring powers and duties upon the tax collector, and imposing penalties by imposing the business privilege tax at the rate of 1 mil per calendar year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 42, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 11, 1976, entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended, enacting, imposing a tax for general revenue purposes in the amount of 2% on earned income and net profits on persons, individuals, associations, and businesses who are residents of the city of Scranton or non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the city of Scranton, requiring the filing of returns by taxpayers subject to the tax, requiring employers to collect the tax at source, providing for the administration, collection, and enforcement of the said tax, and imposing penalties for the violations by reenacting the imposition of the wage tax at 2 and 4/10% on earned income for residents and 1% on earned income for non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the city of Scranton for the year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7E.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 43, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 78, 2017, and ordinance amending file of the Council Number 100, 1976, entitled, "An Ordnance as Amended, Levying General and Special Taxes for the Fiscal Year 1977 by Setting the Millage for the Year 2019, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by amending Section 1, reverting back to the millage rates from 2016, which are .232521 mils levy on land, and .050564 mils levy on all buildings, and by eliminating the dedicated millage for debt service contained in Section 2, and replacing the dedicated millage for debt service with a dedicated debt percentage of 32% of real estate tax revenues collected on a current-year basis."
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7F.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 44, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, SSA Pension for Receiving Funds from That Part of the Sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority Proceeds Used for the Pension Obligation Note taxable series of 2018 and the Disbursement of Payments on the Pension Obligation Note taxable series of 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7G.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 45, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, SSA Funds for Receiving the Remaining Balance of Funds from the Sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority for Dispersing for Future City Projects.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7H.
Second, on the question.
Yes, on the question. For 7H and the few other items remaining, I asked specific questions about these legislative items, received no response, surprise, surprise. Still going to vote for it because we're just creating a special city account, but Mrs. Reed, if we could send that again, specifically with this one, I think we may have a document someplace, if you can find it in the file, a few years ago where they delineated where we were going to use all the sewer authority funds for future city projects. I was just asking for an update, wasn't sure if that had changed at all over the last year or two. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption File of the Council Number 46, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 138, 2017, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a pension trust agreement with the composite pension board to hold approximately $22,910,531.56 of the proceeds from the sale of the assets of the Scranton Sewer Authority in trust until such time as pension reforms have been enacted by permitting the city to transfer funds required pursuant to the original trust agreement to the composite pension board through the issuance of non-ele, excuse me, non-electoral debt in a principal amount of approximately
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7I. Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 47, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, Street Lighting Lease Reserve Funds for the receipt and dispersment of street lighting leased reserve funds.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7J.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption File of the Council Number 48, 2018, creating and establishing special city account number as noted, entitled, Highmark Healthcare Reserve for the receipt of Highmark Healthcare Funds and dispersment of these funds for city of Scranton healthcare costs.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of Item 7K.
Second, on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7K legally and lawfully adopted.
7L, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption File of the Council Number 49, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 21, 2016, an ordinance entitled, Defining and Authorizing Tax Exemptions from Real Property Tax in Order to Improve Deteriorating Real Property in Certain Areas in the City of Scranton, Establishing an Exemption Schedule and Procedures for Obtaining Exemptions and Providing for Non-Permissible Exemptions and Limiting Amendment Thereto to Expand the Eligible Areas, Increase the Duration of Each Exemption, and to Lift the Cap on Each Exemption.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7L. Second, on the question.
Yes, on the question. I just want to reiterate my comments from last week. I know there is some opposition to this legislation. I look at it this way. You know, if we do nothing, you know, if we don't offer any incentive, then we're just probably going to remain where we are now, which I think is in neutral. Maybe in 10 or 11 years or 20 years when we look back at this, maybe it won't have the effect that we think it will, but when the Chamber of Commerce came in, they presented data from other communities that showed it did make a difference and it did move the needle in the right direction. So that's the reason that I'll be voting for it.
Just to also reiterate some of what I mentioned, I strongly support this legislation, and I really want to give a thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, they were representative here today, they really took the lead on this issue. One point I want to make that actually isn't just pertaining to this is much work is being done outside of what you see on television. There were many meetings between members of council and the chamber, I know they're actively working with the school district now, I'm going to be working with the county as well, but large pieces of legislation such as this take time. Unfortunately, it's not something that somebody has an idea and the next day it's implemented. We wish it was that easy, but really want to thank the, the chamber for their leadership on this issue. I'm hopeful that the school district will follow suit and pass this piece of legislation, the county as well, but it really is something that I'm, I'm very proud to support, it'll get the economic engine in the city moving, hopefully encourage development in our, not only in our downtown, but also in our neighborhoods. And I think this legislation, along with the budget that we, we passed tonight, really represents a turning point for the city of Scranton where we're going from being reactive, addressing constant issues over and over again, to being proactive and creating a program that is hopefully going to grow the city and grow our tax base, which is the key component of, of this plan. So I'm strongly in favor, and hopefully in 10 years, I won't be sitting here, none of us will be sitting here where we can look back and say, this is a very good thing that really got the city moving in the right direction.
Yeah, on the question, I'm, I'm in favor from this. I know when we spoke with the chamber, I was really impressed with the presentation, the data from the other cities, and the fact that the chamber is actually standing behind this, it's going to help move the program for us. This is our second swing at ALERTA. We had, actually, we have a three-year one in place now, it really didn't do anything. So what I'm expecting out of this tenure ALERTA, and what I'm expecting from, from us as a city is more updates to, within city hall, so we can get that out to, to the residents of the city to see how is this working for us? What's it doing to our permit revenue? What is it doing to new construction? If not on a, a monthly basis, like Ms. Schumacher said, on a quarterly basis. But I would just, I want to see this program kind of start hot and fizzle out. I want to keep updates so we can keep abreast of this and communicate that out to everybody on what this program's actually doing for us. That's all.
Anyone else?
On the question, excuse me, several weeks ago, my comments on the subject, they called this legislation bold and dramatic, and for our city, it certainly is. As we know, the status quo has brought us to where we are today. Yes, we are better off financially than we were just a few years ago, but growth is basically nonexistent, and the numbers, especially our assessed valuation of real property, clearly shows that lack of growth. And if you do not grow your community or have limited growth, you cannot sustain government at the level that our citizens expect and deserve. When you do not grow your city, expenses will just continue to rise, and you have no alternative but to raise taxes to balance your budget. The one-time revenue sources are gone. So now it's pretty simple. When you're out of money, you better start thinking. This legislation is about thinking about tomorrow. With an influx of new construction, jobs will be created, wage taxes will be paid, homeownership will increase, building permits will be granted, and additional commerce will be created. And then in year 11, when the ALERTA properties go online, new property taxes will be received. Taxes, in most cases, that would have never happened without this incentive. And then again in year 12, and 13, and 14, and 15, and so on and so forth. Someday, we may not need this type of legislation, but today is not that day.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7L legally and lawfully adopted.
7M for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, file of the Council Number 50, 2018, amending file of the Council Number 22, 2016, an ordinance entitled, "Defining and Authorizing Tax Exemptions from Real Property Tax in Order to Stimulate Residential, Commercial, and Other Business Activity in Certain Areas in the City of Scranton," establishing an exemption schedule and procedures for obtaining exemptions, providing for non-permissible exemptions, and limiting amendment thereto in order to expand the eligible areas, increase the duration of each exemption, and to lift the cap on each exemption.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7M. Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7M legally and lawfully adopted.
7N for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 90, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District with Joseph M. Alu and Associates to perform the Scranton Single Tax Office Independent Audit for Fiscal Years Ending December 31, 2017, and December 31, 2018.